Thank you and good evening to the Milford Planning Board Meeting, May 16th, in Milford Town Hall. Meetings are on Town TV and it is being broadcast, so we are live. With that, I'll open the meeting and take a motion for the meeting minutes for the 5:22 meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Babe to accept the meeting minutes, seconded by Joe. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the meeting minutes will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous at five. We have 181P. I don't believe there's anybody here for that. It was, Larry, you can go over. This was previously approved by the board. Unfortunately, apparently, the proponent didn't understand it was a land court plan.
We processed it in 2020 erroneously, thinking it was unregistered land. It's not. It's land court. So it's back.
So the only...
Endorsable as submitted.
Yeah. It was endorsed or submitted. It's the same plan that we had originally approved. Larry signed it. For those members that may not be aware, we, most of the 81Ps are signed by Larry, but land court plans need to be signed by a majority of the board. So that's why it's back to us today. Any questions from any members of the board?
Yeah. Any particular use that he's going to have for that corner piece? I mean...
No, I don't know. I don't know what specifically they're splitting it off for. I don't recall.
Right now, I'll tell you, if the town did something to make the right-hand turn so the trailer's going in, it would be a lot easier to go up Industrial Drive, the trail is taking the right-hand turn there.
It's not a buildable.
No. It's not a buildable lot, and that may very well be why they're setting it aside. I don't know. But I'll ask Dave.
Okay.
I see him next.
Other than that, I got the problem.
Anybody else have questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to accept it.
Motion to sign the 81P plan. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Second. Any further discussion on signing? Hearing none. All those in favor of signing the 81P will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous at five. I'll start the signatures, but we can, you can go ahead and get ready and whatever you need to do, and I'll just do this, and you can start.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board for the record. My name is Hal Chuber. I'm a consulting engineer with offices at One Four State Road in London, Massachusetts. And it's good to be here. Of course, actually, the last couple of years, we've held all the hearings through, it's very easy. What we have here, we have the amendment site plan application for 146 South Main Street. The property is located off of South Main Street, which is Route 140. This is the boundaries of the property. It's about 10.7 acres. Currently, there's an 80,000-square-foot building on the property with associated parking and driveway off 140. They share, there's a reciprocal easement and access through this property to access the property on the back. Approximately 10, eight acres of the 10.7 is covered with impervious surfaces, parking lot in the building. My client, who's here tonight with us, and they have a car wash business. They own and operate about 25 car washes and gas stations in Massachusetts, kind of the Boston metropolitan area. Any specific questions in regards to operation of the car wash? He'll be happy to answer. Basically, currently, in this northeast corner of the property, there's an existing propane filling station business, and I believe they appeared before you to relocate that to the side of the property at one time.
At one time.
Right. Well, prior to developing this, I called Larry, and he was, you know, kind enough to sit with me a couple of times, and I had the conceptual layout, and he made a few suggestions, and we changed the layout. And basically, he wanted to separate the traffic from, because this is the main entrance to the plaza from the car wash, and we proposed a three-foot island. I do have a layout on the larger scale that you can see. So the car wash operation or facility will occupy approximately 35,000 square feet of the existing parking lot. So it's all within areas that's already disturbed or paved and above. The proposal is for 150 by 35 automated car wash channel, and you can see from this layout, you come in through the main entrance through 140, and then you loop around the building in the common block size, and you enter from the west side and exit from the east. There's two lanes with queuing. We went through this with, prior to submitting to the ZBA, to make sure we have all the queuing in compliance with the zoning bylaws for the town of Milford, and also, we have enough room for an emergency vehicle to go around the building in case of a fire. And we did need the, the property is in the CC, which is a commercial highway business, and we needed the special permit from the zoning board for the use. We did appear before the zoning board on February 2nd, February 9, I believe, and also, I believe in your packet, you have a copy of the approval from the ZBA.
Yep.
A couple of the neighbors showed up. They had some concerns about the trash in the back, and we did, on this layout, we did provide, they, there was a couple of conditions with the ZBA, to provide a chain link fence in the back to prevent any of the trash going into the channel, and this is shown on this plan. Basically, the plan meets all the required zoning bylaws in terms of parking setbacks. Again, I think Larry has his documentation for approval, but there's some comments from the sewer and the water department, and there was some also comments from the town engineer, which I got to see the memo a couple of days ago. But we can go over this, just to clarify some of the things. And obviously, I know you're probably not going to make a decision tonight until we probably resolve those comments from the department. But we will, I reached out to the sewer commissioner already, and we will be working with that, too. In terms of traffic, I did submit the traffic statement, and I used the ITE ten, and they do account for 60% of the traffic being, pass-by traffic, and I know you said you said 11 and you're not sure, or you, you know, but, you know, I mean, my client is here. Most of the, we know the traffic, most of the traffic for a gas station or car wash or convenience store or empty doors, they're all, and ITE says any use under 800 and 900 just qualifies for the 60%.
That's what it said in 10. That's what it said in addition 10. Addition 11 has more specific data on percentages for specific uses. It doesn't really say that you can't use it for the car wash, but it doesn't really say that you can, and it doesn't tell, it's not as specific about what the percentage would be. So, and really, my bigger concern was, was doing the analysis at this intersection where it's a shared driveway, because your analysis only included the uses on the rear parcel.
Right.
And so it's a shared driveway.
Yeah, we can get into that, because I looked at that, too. I'm not comfortable without, without more in-depth analysis at the, I mean, that'd probably be one of my comments along the way, but...
Okay. And also, you had some comments about the stormwater, too, but I don't think we propose any infiltration. I think what we, remember when we first met, where I think, it's all paved, so we're reducing the runoff, because we're replacing some of the, the, the impervious now with landscape. So in terms of volume, I think we are, and also, we were treating it, but I'm not sure if...
Yeah. I just, I think what I would, I guess what I would like to see is, and this was just my recommendation, I'd like to see a test pit, just to see where groundwater is, see what kind of material it is. It's very likely the groundwater is high, and you're not going to be able to do infiltration, in which case, I would agree, you've met the, all of the requirements, but I would at least like to see where groundwater is.
So I think, obviously, we need to do more work and address some of the concerns that you have.
Yep. The, I'll just, in the packet, there are comments from staff. I'll try to paraphrase them as opposed to trying to read them all in, but I will read Larry's in, just so, because it does give a background. Applicant is requesting amendment type plan approval, commercial car wash within the CC Highway Commercial District, requiring special permit from ZBA, which is also in the packet. 2923 public hearing from the ZBA. Proposal is to redevelop, as the applicant said, approximately 35,000 square feet of the interior of the plaza to accommodate a drive-through car wash, 35 by 150-foot automatic drive-through car wash building, and queuing lanes are proposed, with 21 self-service external vacuum stations to be located along the south side of the building, so that would be facing the plaza itself, or facing the other buildings inside the plaza. Facility will utilize two pay stations, each with a queuing lane, as well as the bypass lane. Vacuum stations are to be separated from the main drive aisle of the plaza, parking by a proposed three-foot wide landscape strip, which was pointed out. Larry indicated that all zoning requirements appear to be met, therefore, he recommends approval of the site plan subject to agency comments. There's the ZBA decision. Liz did her review, and as she's mentioned in a couple already, the, she indicated the existing condition plan shall include the access easement, providing access to South Main Street, so that should be shown on the plan, so we know what that is. Not that I think it's that technical, but we probably should get a copy of that as well, the actual legal document of that, so we have that in the set. The proposed sewer connection shall be reviewed by the sewer department, which you've already spoke to, and we obviously will need a letter by the sewer department prior to our approval of the, or at least signing of the plan. And town engineer would like one test pit to try to determine what the, what the depth of groundwater is in terms of traffic and development impacts. Finally, with the conservation commission will be required. I would assume that's because of, along the back, there must be a wetland.
Yep.
So we have disturbance when we go, when we put this in. Shared access with, to Route 140 from this property and the adjacent property, traffic impact analysis should be completed by a traffic engineer and included with the use, that we've already spoken about that. The impact of water usage for the car wash should be described in greater detail. Impact on the sewer system needs to be specified in greater detail due to the reliance on multiple pump stations, as we all know, as it goes down this section, we've got pump stations going into the system down there that have had issues previously. Proposed site development reduces the overall impact of the existing stormwater from the site. Investigation into potential for using some storm infiltration should be included, which goes into the testing, the deep, the test pit that was requested. From the fire department, they, they have no request for this project. They didn't have any other issues. Highway to survey air, only, only pointed out that must obtain a trench permit if he's doing any work out in the street, and I was at for agency comments at this point in time. There is the traffic impact that we talked about, and as Liz indicated, that's the internal traffic impact, not necessarily the one out at 140. So with that, I'll open it up to questions from the board. Larry, did you want to comment?
Well, just, just to note, so people are aware of the schedules, the sewer board's meeting now, so their next meeting is also on a planning board date, which is June 6th. So in the context of updating any reports or, or getting more information from other boards and commissions, where obviously, it's going to need to be continued, my suggestion would be, at minimum, you go to the June 20th meeting, which would give Hal time to hopefully to get on a sewer board meeting, and also have time to do some of these other investigations. Otherwise, he's racing around for a schedule that's not still going to result in anything out of the sewer board, because they're going to be meeting the next time we meet.
Okay.
If that makes any sense.
Questions from the board?
I got a, just a couple, a couple of small things. On the light poles, the, the light poles, you had two inches, two, yeah, two inches, two feet. I'd go with the three feet. In a parking lot, it's, it's crazy to go with two feet. Also in there, you have a oil-water separator and an MDC trap. I would like to see a maintenance schedule that's set up with either the border health or the sewer commissioners to have those maintained, because to have the MDC trap in there and not be maintained is like not having it at all. And those are the things that get by. Other than that, I haven't seen too much. I haven't, I'll look at this a little, little tighter now.
And I'm sorry, on the lighting pole, you said the two feet, what, what?
You have two feet of the concrete sticking, two feet sticking up.
Sticking up three feet above, above surface instead of two.
Three feet, yeah.
Yeah, in the bucket? Okay.
It's just a, it's an extra for the concrete, but it's, it takes a beating a lot better than the poles though. Here we go. Okay. The three-foot island that's between the parking lot that is existing and the new area around this, I just, that, that parking lot, they, they do fly through there. I'm just thinking, Mr. Chairman, is three feet enough?
Well, yeah, I guess, I, I mean, yeah, I know they do fly there. This effectively is in the back section and is down, I would hope would, might, might stop people from flying down through there if there's other things going on. What, what type of plantings do you have laying there? I'm just not sure that anything's going to end up growing.
We have more like shrubs, small shrubs.
Small shrubs, okay. Because if there were trees there, I'd say, I wouldn't want the trees. And what are you using, what, I didn't, I didn't look at the detail. What's the detail for the curb on that? Is that just a straight? Six, six inch or?
Yes. All right. We can look at this if we can make it a little bit wider.
If you can gain a foot, I mean, you know, without impacting, I would assume you're, you know, looking at it, it's somewhat straight through from the section that's there with that, with that curb, so as you come out, you're forcing people somewhat to come around a little, which I'd rather not do, but a foot may, a foot may not hurt you, and that would probably, you know, give you at least a little more separation. I mean, the other thing you can look at, too, is sometimes I don't like them as much, but you can go, you know, you could go with a higher curb there, too, just to be a little more of a...
Deterrant.
Yeah, in terms of anybody crossing over, although I don't think down there would be an issue, but that, that's something you take a look at. I don't know that that's necessary, but, but if you can look at, at getting to a four-foot wide or something in that section, and yeah, I would only put, I would put small shrubs, because there's not going to be enough soil there to grow anything that's going to be big.
You may want to show a width, a dimension on the main aisle. I can't find a sheet that shows the width of the, of the remaining, the new main aisle south of the median that we're talking about.
Yeah. Yeah, the two, the two, the two lanes that you're showing there, what that width is through there. I can't tell, I'm not sure what the scale is, but is it 24? It looks, I know, it looks like it might be bigger, that's why I'm saying.
Okay. So I'd say it's bigger. We can make that for, for...
Yeah.
One of the things that, that ends up, you know, working out is that, given the location of this site at the far east end, the, the speed is usually associated with the entering traffic, because they've had a longer run to pick up speed. The other, the westbound north lane, you know, should be lesser speed, but even so, the...
Yeah, I know, but I know, going down by the gym, and I think it's people that, that are cutting, cutting the corner somewhat that, that can be flying down there. I mean, I think if they're staying, if they're staying straight, I don't think most, you know, there isn't too many people that do that now, but it's, it's everybody heading over to the gym and just cutting through.
And if you, if you get down there, you notice there's three speed bumps.
Three bumps, yeah, crossing at the bank.
There are some people that just, they must buy front ends every year, because they just, right through it.
Yeah, I don't, to tell you the God's honest truth, I don't think those were ever on our plans, those speed bumps, but, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure their design, because some of those are pretty steep. I mean, you, if you hit those, you fly over them.
Right.
But that's a story for a different day. Do you have any?
Good right now, wait on that traffic study.
Yeah, my, my comment was, when I saw that, is that I'd like to see a traffic study out at that location, for no other reason than to update what we have, because that is a, it's a bad, it's a, it's not the greatest intersection. I mean, that, that tends to back up traffic between there, McDonald's, all the way back to the, the State's Light at South Main Street, Main Street intersections, or 140 intersection becomes a little, a little bit of a mess, so...
Close same way towards the belly ham.
Yeah, and it can go the other way, too.
Exactly. And that's, yeah, I think that was my only concern, traveling that area on occasion, yeah. There's a lot of volume.
There's a lot of cars that go around, the cars that are taking a lot of...
Yeah, and unfortunately, I don't know that we have anything, and again, it's not this one development that's changing or not, but I'd like to get an update of where the hell we are and what's going on down there. I mean, maybe it's something that the town looks at at some point in terms of making other property, you know, trying to, trying to get a bypass lane, a left turn in, a bypass lane available with, with the property on the right, but that's, I don't know that this, you know, if we look at what was originally approved down there, if this adds more traffic into that or not, I don't think it's that much that we could say, you know, this is, this is the cause of that.
Great. That's what, I figured it wasn't going to be enough to say that we, but at the same time, I thought...
Yeah, it's good that we, we have an update, so we have a, a place to start from, at least going forward, too, especially if, not that I think it will, because of the issues, but you do have the property on the other side of the street that is still available for development, and if that ever, if anything does happen there, we should know what, what the real traffic is at this location. Anything else from any members of the board? I mean, we, just, just so you know, as we said, we, with, with those types of questions and, and the sewer department, normally, that, that's, you know, we would continue, we'll continue this, and so I, you know, I will entertain a motion to continue to the second meeting in June, which will allow the applicant time to go to the sewer board and also perform the, get the traffic analysis done and the, the testing for groundwater at the site.
I'll make a motion that we continue it until the second meeting, second meeting in June, so that we can get some answers for the gentleman here and the owner of the property for the sewer department.
I have a second.
Second. You got that, Larry?
I second it.
I agree.
It's a nice building, I mean, definitely going to fit in next to the bank, right on outside.
Yeah. Any further discussion? Hearing not, I'll take a vote. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We will see you again in the second meeting in June. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And with that, we will go to, make sure I'm on the right agenda, I don't want to screw up. You want to sign that? Well, we're waiting. So the next thing we have is the ZBA variance referral for 10 Bandi Lane, Alexander Pisha. I'll read Larry's. Yes, you're going to abstain, Babe? You don't, you don't want to talk about your neighbor? I'll read the Larry's letter into the record again. I'll just try to paraphrase, so we're not reading anything. The applicant requests front yard, front and side yard setback variances to allow for recently improperly constructed 12 by 20 detached accessory structure to remain in its current location. So it's already been placed on the site, which, and it violates both front and side yard setbacks. The building permit was issued in error, and the plot plan originally submitted was inaccurate and not to scale. The accessory structure is currently located 14.9 feet from the front property line setback, 30 foot required, and .1 from the side yard, 20 feet required. Followed by 20 temporary structure is characterized on the building permit as being on no foundation and that the structure is movable. Relocating the structure and reducing the size would considerably lessen the encroachment into the required yards. Configuration of the existing lot is generally similar to others in the neighborhood. Subject property is a substantially flat lot, single-family dwelling. There exist no features on the current lot that differ from others in the neighborhood, therefore, I recommend an unfavorable to the ZBA. Any comments, questions from the board? While certainly I can't answer questions, but I can certainly take comments. Any other questions? I mean, I took a look at, I took a look at the building permit, I, you know, the building permit clearly states that the, no foundation, structure is movable, so I, you know, and, and it's, the, regardless of the building permit being issued or not, it's, it's, it's the applicant's, to me, it's the applicant that needs to provide the correct information on, on the permits and the plans. The building, you know, the building official is not making his decision on, on, on anything other than what is submitted. So the applicant said it would work, and now he's asking for leave from the town. To me, it's, it's a dangerous slope we would go down, approving a variance in this case. I don't, there's no hardship, there's no hardship other than he didn't, he didn't do his own due diligence to make sure it was where he said it was going to be and was constructed as he said it was going to be in the permit, and so it leads to, you know, people saying, put it in and then go ask for forgiveness, and I think that's a dangerous slope to go down.
Yeah, I guess a question of clarity. This original, though inaccurate, plot plan, based on the offsets, those offsets would have met current building codes or placement of this?
No.
No, they would, they still wouldn't even have met.
They still wouldn't have done it.
Right.
But there are two, several things wrong with, with that plan, because that is the plan that was submitted to the building official, but the plan itself wasn't a stamped, wasn't stamped by a licensed surveyor, so the plan itself was inaccurate. Then, it wa, and it wasn't to scale.
Correct.
Then, the sketch that was put on it was done at a different scale to the, to the other one that wasn't right to begin with, so it was just compounding the error, but it didn't meet the requirements anyway. So, yeah, it, you can see the, the, a couple sheets behind that is the actual survey from, from Allen Engineering that results in the .1 setback on the side and the 14.9 in the front. So that's an accurate plan all the way around. The survey is, is accurate, the house location's accurate, all the dimensions are accurate. Yeah, so...
Yeah, I mean, it, you know, unfortunately, the building official had this plan, and plot plans are notorious for, I mean, the survey is always right down, you can't use them, you know, their only purpose is to say that it meets, it meets current zoning or it meets zoning, whatever, whatever relief has been granted, but other than that, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't even indicate that the house is shown totally correct on the lot. So to then use that and, and then one that says plot plan zoomed in with accessory structure automatically tells you the scale, who the hell knows what the scale is, and, you know, unless you're an engineer, you're probably not going to go in and check the, the dimensions to make sure. But I mean, just looking at this real quick and then looking at Allen Engineering, you can tell that not much was done, so, I mean, again, I've, I've said this numerous times, the enabling statute for the zoning board of appeals is, is the hardship has to be something unique with the property, and this, this, to me, doesn't meet that test to even get to the point where you can submit the application. It, it's clearly a, something that was, the applicant themselves caused the problem, not anything with the property itself. So with that, I'll take a motion to, for a recommendation to the ZBA.
I make a motion to issue an unfavorable.
Motion to send an unfavorable recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Chris. Any further discussion?
By sending an unfavorable to the zoning board, this, this applicant cannot come back?
No, it has, the, the board has to send some recommendation to the ZBA, so they can act at their upcoming public hearing. Otherwise, they have to wait a month before they do it. So the bylaw requires that to happen, for them to act. It doesn't matter what you say, they just need to get a report.
What you say is not binding in any way.
What you say is not binding in any way, but it's a requirement.
For the ZBA.
It'd be nice if they actually followed them, but they don't.
If the ZBA said, no, he couldn't come back.
Right.
But we're not, we're not.
For two years, yeah.
Yeah, unless he makes, quote, substantial change and that, that's a, that could be changing the location of the building would be considered substantial change. So he, he could come back and ask for, for a change where he, he made, he moved the building somewhat and it's now no longer point one feet, it's whatever. He can come back at, at any point with that, but we're not, that one's out of ours. We only send the recommendation.
I know there's a, a wait, I didn't know it was us.
Yes, no. Any other discussion? Hearing not, all those in favor of sending an unfavorable to the ZBA will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's four in favor and one abstention, Larry. Just an update for board members in terms of the, uh, the plan and, uh, where we are. We did receive some, some input back from Metropolitan Area Planning Council. Larry and I have been trying to go through that and trying to figure out some funding, what they may have available or not, so we are moving forward with it. Again, uh, we also did talk to the finance committee. The finance committee seemed to be amenable to, to the request. I'm not good, they understood the request, let's put it that way. They understood why we, why we were coming back. They understood the, uh, normal cycle of, of the plan, comprehensive plan usually being in the, in the neighborhood of ten years, that, that our plan is twenty years old at this point and by the time we complete it, will be over twenty years. We went over what we thought were the major issues with them. They, they understood why we were looking at the areas that we were looking and, and they also understood the, which is important to them, is the fact that, uh, with the town being almost built out, the ability to obtain additional tax revenue is going to be severely limited and that the, the possibility of changing to higher and better usages, especially as they, as they relate to commercial and industrial land that's already developed could be a, could be an area that, that does provide the town with some additional tax revenue going forward, other than the, the two and a half that we'd be able to, uh, obtain in the, uh, the yearly increases. So they understood why we should be taking a look at that and why it would be good to find out what other people are doing with that. We also explained to them why we, you know, we weren't, we had looked for funding outside of, outside of the town, but a, a lot of that comes with strings, in terms of what the state's looking at, especially as it relates to residential density development. And that wasn't something that we felt was, was something that being, the residential areas being even more developed than the other areas and, and not, not areas that are easily subject to re, uh, revitalization, uh, didn't really make sense for us to take a look at those and wasn't going to be something that we thought we'd be able to institute if it went forward. So they were aware as to why we weren't looking at those types of things. So I think it was, it was a good meeting. We told them that obviously we'd be back, uh, once we had a more firmer cost and a better idea of our schedule, but we did, we did want to try to, and planned on getting on the fall town meeting.
Yeah, it was an informational, kind of a heads up, uh, for, from us for them, so it wasn't anything that generated a motion or a vote. And similarly, the letter, uh, that went to the select board was on their agenda and they received it as correspondence, so that really didn't trigger a vote, but they were, you know, generally supportive and, you know, should be fine going forward.
Anything else? Anyone have?
Nope.
Make a motion with adjourned?
Motion to adjourn by Babe. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Joe. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous at five. Thank you and good night.